Special Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting, September 24th, 2024.
I call the Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council, Bussara's Codified Ordinances, Chapter 111, Council Rules of Council, and Bussara's Codified Ordinance, Chapter 113, Ordinances and Resolutions, meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First on the agenda is public participation. Anybody wishing to talk to the ad hoc committee or address the ad hoc committee, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. I want to thank the ad hoc committee for giving me the opportunity to address the committee. I feel there's a lot of, well, the committees, as I told some of the council members at the beginning of this term, I think there's a lot of power in the committees, which is one reason why I told some of the members, you're probably not going to see me at a lot of the committee meetings because I don't want to be trying to drive the committee meetings. I feel like the chair of those committee meetings should be driving those meetings. It wasn't that many years ago when the council president would always be sitting up there at every single committee meeting. So Vicki, I commend you for running this ad hoc committee. And I'll get to the points here. So I had a couple things I did, however, want to bring up for the rules, kind of some loose ends things. One, where does the administration sit during committee meetings? It's in the rules currently that they, that the only people allowed be on that side of the railing is the committee members themselves. However, sometimes you see the auditor back there, sometimes you see some of the other in the administration over there. So if that could be more clearly defined. Also, the second, the press table, well, it's been used as a press table, however, it's totally not in the rules at all. Doesn't mention that table. So if I'm to enforce the rules as is and the rules only currently have in them that the public is to be behind the railing, then currently as the rules read, I would think that anybody could sit at that table, that wants to sit at that table. So if you guys want to restrict that or more clearly define it or just leave it alone, just wanted to make sure that was out there. Third, I did talk to, I reached out to an attorney that works for the OML. They specialize in municipal law. Because the absences and things like that, they told me that it's already somewhere in the Ohio revise code that three unexcused absences within a certain time period, council could remove one of its own members. I don't know where it's at. He was, he's at a conference right now, so he wasn't able to give me the ORC on that. But I told him, hey, you know, could you get it to me at some point? If I do get it, I'll forward it to you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Fourth, sexual harassment policy. The city has one that I believe they use for regular city employees. However, I didn't see anything, I looked, I had the mayor's office look at my file, and I never signed any sexual harassment policy when I was given all the paperwork for new employees. So if, I feel like there should be one, and whether that encompasses all elected officials or just the council members, you know, that might be something that has to be brought up back at a different meeting because if, I know this is rules for council members only, it doesn't include other elected officials, but I think there might need to be something that encompasses other elected officials as well. That's it. That's the only four things that I wanted to point out to the committee. And I'm going to relinquish the podium at this time.
Any more public participation?
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I want to refer to, hopefully it's page 5 of 11, Section 111.10, Order of Business. You guys are changing where you're granting permission of visitors speak above the approval of minutes. To me, the minutes of the administration or the council needs to be approved prior to anyone speaking because if that person is speaking upon those minutes, and then all of a sudden you guys want to change them after they publicly speak, I mean, where's the checks and balance here? Okay. I've got a few more for you. In your proposed, since it's part of this group of thing, it's your Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council, last updated March of 2024. Number four, it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, while addressing council or committee shall be forthwith by the presiding officer barred-
Excuse me, Mr. White, where are you at again?
Okay, I'm in your Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council, last updated in March of 2024. Okay? Number four, under A, citizens' participation. It says in there that blah, 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 while addressing council or committees shall be forthwith by the presiding officer, barred from any further audience before council or a committee. Okay? What do you mean by barred? Okay, you can remove them, but you'll have to take legal action basically to bar them from coming to council. Maybe they had a wrong day or something like that. Then in number six, will not be permitted to speak to council or committee from the chair in the audience. We see this violation all the time. Matter of fact, Thursday night, there were several violations of that, of people sitting at that table, not coming up and addressing a committee in a proper manner. Let's see, where else I want to go to? And still in six, on the next page, any person with questions concerning legislation minutes, regardless, encourage to submit those questions and write in to the council president or committee chair or clerk prior to the start of the meeting. So if someone comes up, I need clarification on this. So if anybody has any concerns about legislations or anything about previous meetings, you're supposed to submit those prior to, and they will be read or they will not be read. It's kind of confusing here because then you say, questions received after that time will be addressed at the next council or committee meeting. I think there just needs to be a little clarification there of what you're meaning. Number seven, each individual addressing council or the committee is asked to identify them. But you all ask us to, I believe the term you need to add in there is stand at the podium and identify themselves like I have done. And that should include all visitors. Number eight, it's halfway down where it says, the agenda shall speak to council on one subject at a time for a minimum of five minutes during each of the three opportunities to address council. Speaker may be allotted, this is why I didn't understand, the speaker may be allotted more time or have their time limited at the discretion of the presiding officer. Okay? So do we have five minutes? Don't we have five minutes? If someone gets a little bit agitated as the chair, they take your time away? That's not clearly defined. You tell everybody five minutes, but then this says something totally different. And the one subject matter, and I've been told several times that if it doesn't pertain to what is on the agenda, you can't come up here and talk about it. Okay? But this council and committee meetings have allowed people to come up here out of committee meeting to talk about stuff that has no pertinent information to that agenda. Period. All right. Under paragraph B, council participation. Oh, it says in here, council members and city officers will silence all-
What number are you at, Mr. White?
Number two, B2, I'm sorry. B2.
Do you sanctify my fellowship?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Where it says in there, council members and city officers will silence all electronic devices, I think needs to be added in there that they're not permitted to use them while in session. That means texting messaging each other while during council meetings or committee meetings. I mean, if you're going to make them silent, then why should they be using their electronic devices when they're supposed to be paying attention? Number three, B3, where it says business casual attire during months of March through October. I think that needs to be clearly defined or restated because some people do come from work, and I understand that. But at other times, I think some of the business attire, because above there, you define what the business attire is in the other months, but you don't clearly define it during business casual. And then in B4, barred from any attendance before council or committee, it's the last pretty much sentence. I think that wording barred, I don't know. I'm not an attorney, never went to law school, passed no bar. But I think barred means that you're not allowed to attend anymore. Okay? Maybe I'm wrong. But that I think you have to do legally through a court system. But I'm not sure, you can ask the law director on that. Okay, on the next page, number six, I had to look this word up because somebody else asked me about it too, and I said I had to look it up. The word is S-U-C-I-N-C-T. I think what you really need to do is put the definition in there where it's briefly and clearly expressed manner with no time for filibustering. I had to look that one up. Number eight, on that same page, says, are asked for subject. So basically what I'm saying is that in here, it's asking for everything that needs to be submitted to council packets, okay, to be put online for the public 24 hours before. But I think it should include all reports, special speakers, and all information dealing what the subject matters are during that council or committee meetings, okay, that should be put on documents on demand. I think there's more stuff that needs to be put on documents on demand that are not on there. Okay? And I think that would pretty much lower the public records request that people could, you know, find this more easier, more friendly user. Because I have found a lot of stuff on documents on demand that have not been updated since 2020.
Such as?
The police reports, the final police reports. There is no section on there for any of the fire.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with council. So then you need to discuss that with the police and the-
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, if information is on there-
But council is doing their-
Right. But I'm saying is, everything should be included on the subject matters that are being spoke. And that's why I go back to where you guys have it in here, miscellaneous C. Number two, records will be maintained in accordance with the city of Bussara's Records Retention Policy, as well as published on the city's website and placed on documents on demand. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Mr. White, I was writing as fast as you were speaking. Is it possible to have a copy of what you have read some in the off-chance?
Yeah, I give it to you. It's just chicken scratches on my pages. That's all I did.
Then fine, I'll just listen to the audio recording and-
But I mean, I can rewrite them out for you.
No, that's not necessary.
I'd mull it all the way out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. So I know that there was concern about developing a, I forgot the name of it, sexual harassment policy. I guess basing off that, I have the opinion that maybe a code of ethics should be drafted for council, and that could include all the things that you want as social media policy, all those things could be discussed and could be put in a code of ethics. However, if you look at the oath that you guys sworn, the information that's in the Ohio revise code, it pretty much is spelled out in there. So you swear to basically be professional, and I guess if you want that defined, that's probably the best way to do it. So I mean, may or may not be able to comment on that since that is not rules and procedure or the ORC unless you're wanting to add cross-reference, or I don't even know, a section in the ORC saying that council will draft and keep a high ethic or, you know, an ethics, code of ethics and be enforced with it. With that being said though, in these previous conversations that we've had, my concern is that we keep going back and forth with how do we get council to enforce these things? I believe it would be, if I'm remembering properly, Mr. Fankhauser himself stated that there's no repercussions for your actions. There's no repercussions of your actions if you don't have the ability or the know-how to have an individual who leaves your meetings to enforce them. So the biggest thing that I've stated over and over again is the point of orders. So I'm just expressing my opinion, saying that stop letting bad behavior slide and instead address it when it happens. That's in Robert's Rules, that's what you're supposed to do. And I get not being one team to be confrontational, but then when you're constantly being dragged through the mud for others' misconduct, you know, at some point you have to stand up for yourself. So that's just my opinion. And that also goes with misconduct with any presiding officer. If you have a problem with how a presiding officer is doing something, if you believe it's materially wrong and that they're not following the stated rules and procedures, you can point of order your presiding officer, you can actually, if he rules on something, he or she, a chairperson, rules on something and you're not happy with how they've ruled, you can appeal and ask for a vote from the voting body, and they're allowed to override the presiding officer. So that's just a note too, that's all in Robert's Rules. But if actions keep happening, that is just staining our town, illegal in nature. I've been pretty silent on all of it, but with it being extended again, it's not going to get addressed with there being misconduct and misrepresenting council as a whole. If you are misusing or abusing your power and reflecting poorly on council as a whole, breaking laws, not following your oath, conducting misconduct in office, you have to have a way to address these things. I provided you and Mr. Gobrecht policies in, or not policies, revised codes in the ORC. I did have this methods of removal of public officers that I forgot to share to you, so I went ahead and printed copies. In here, this is from 2022, the LSC is the Legislative Something Commission. Sorry, my memory's not very, or my memory's not very good right now. But the LSC is the opinion body of the Ohio General Assembly, and they have left this brief and placed their opinion that the only way to, if, you know, it escalates to this point, removing someone from office after they've broke the law, if they've conducted misconduct in office, malfeasance, misfeasance, non-feasance, is by the section stated, which is the 307 through 310. So that's the definition of misconduct in office and then removal of public officer. So the probate one's not even according to here, their opinion is that it's not even valid to use locally. You would have to draft a complaint, ask for 15% of the electors on the last governor's election to endorse said complaint, and then have it filed with common pleas. Obviously, that's like the last case scenario, and people say there's been a lot of things happening behind closed doors or whatever. The only thing that I've seen, because I'm up here every day, and, or not every day, but every council meeting, is that I've seen a lot of people try to do their best to keep everybody on track and to mitigate improper behavior and to counsel and have long, deep conversations after the council meeting and give their advice, and I've seen that. And so I appreciate that you've tried to mitigate that, but at some point it's like you have to state it on the record if you've exhausted all your options. I don't know what else to say to that matter. But all this being said, I've outlined it, I hope to hear Brandon's opinion. And yes, I am not a, I am not a lawyer, however, bringing this up, I was advised to bring this up to you by my lawyer, seeing that misconduct against me, or however you want to word that, was done by a member of this body using their title and their position to improperly use and contact my employer and my school. So that I do have a little bit of heated conversation with, but honestly, it's just something I haven't commented on much because I was hoping to get settled, but it's been continued until November 4th, so it's not going to get settled for a while. So basically, long story short, I hope to hear that we come up with a plan on how to address misconduct. I do see 731.45 was added. My only recommendation to the 111 is under misconduct, 3.07, the ORC 3.07 to 3.10 is added. And finally, you are able to conduct a committee and/or a special meeting to address misconduct. So sending emails about alleged misconduct to people's employers and alleging criminal and/or unethical actions is not the right procedure. That's misusing your position in office to get somebody in trouble. You can't use your email from your council email to represent the council as a whole and make an action without the approval of council. That's misconduct in office, and it's happened twice now by two different members. So I'm hoping that it's taken seriously, that there is a method to address this behavior, and it's way bigger than some sexual harassment policy. I do agree that there should be one, but I won't relinquish the podium with that. And then if you have any questions about what I've stated, please let me know. Thank you.
Any other public participation? See, no one. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 19th, 2024 Special Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting. Those minutes are not ready as of tonight, so we will approve those minutes or address those minutes at our next ad hoc committee meeting, when we schedule that. Next, rules of, oh, excuse me. Yes, Chris.
Did you pro-call?
Oh, no, we did not. Members present. Zion Hickman, Chris Moritz, and myself, Vicki DeShawn, Chair, and absent is Carolyn Shireman. Thank you, Chris, for bringing that to my attention. Okay, so now we'll do Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council. Y'all were given a copy of the Rules of Procedure. And what I did is I took the last draft that we had, which was, and really, it wasn't a draft, it's what was approved in March 2024. So I took that, and then I did highlighting in yellow of different items that we discussed back on our August the 19th, no, August the 19th, yeah, August the 19th, 24 meeting to just, you know, remind us that that's what we had talked about, and I'd just like to go over those and discuss others. First off, under A, citizen participation. At the, yeah, at our last ad hoc meeting, it was suggested by a citizen that we change the title of citizen participation. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Slater, but I had written down that you were looking for it to state rules for non-council, rules for non-council or committee. And I listened to that on the-
Yeah, I think the reason I stated this is because in the ordinances, and I had my notes, I think it's in here, it states non-council, when removing somebody, I'll have to find it.
Oh.
When removing somebody from council, it states-
That was the section that I believe-
I'm sorry, in the ordinance. Yeah. Sorry.
Under Council Rules for Security, 111.21, page 11, referred to them as non-council members.
Yeah, non-council or committee members, I guess. I think that's what we thought, right? Only because that would then, you know, if we're treated, if they're treated like committee, non-committee members are treated like citizens not inside their committee, that's, would be more clear, I guess.
So what are you saying that you think that A should read instead of citizen participation?
Non-council or committee member participation.
Okay, it was hard for me to hear you there, Clarissa.
Sorry. I forget that this isn't broadcast, like not projecting towards you.
It doesn't.
Non-council slash committee member participation? I don't know how you want to make that more clear, but that's how it's written in the ordinance, so I just thought it would be more uniform. And since sometimes you guys have like presentations during committee meetings, not that I expect a person giving you a presentation being rude, but-
Okay, my thought there is, if we would state citizen participation like we have now, and then we could put in parenthesis, non-council slash non-committee?
I mean, you could also maybe put it as like a definition, I guess, if you want to maybe like-
Because I could see someone say, well, what is a non-council, non-committee person? That's why I'm wondering if we need to get citizen in there.
Well, what did, what did we say that at the podium, 121 or 21?
1121.
I mean, they say non-council members.
Yes.
But I guess the only thing you have to worry about is people with special floor access, like the auditor, mayor, safety service director, Miranda. I think we're, I think that we should be-
I think we're, I think that we should be clear on what you mean, but I just maybe non.
What's the committee think?
I think having it as a definition might be better than just changing the whole title of the section A, just having it as like a parentheses or just a defined term.
That'd work for me, too, I'm sure.
I think it's like the ORC does a lot, right? Underneath revised code, one of the first things they'll say is like, they'll write out definitions. So if you don't want to say citizen, like, non-member, and then you could, I'm trying to remember how it's normally phrased, non-member, so it'd be like, the definition of non-member in this section is defined as, and then it'll tell you like the definition. You would know better than me. I only have a undergrad in criminology, so I'm not a.
So you understand what she's saying, Mr. Gober? Okay, then are we fine with what he feels would be an appropriate title or? I mean, I don't want to get too bogged down in.
Semantics.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the bread and butter, statutory interpretation is semantics.
Yeah.
So it can't hurt to be redundant, and it can't hurt to be clear.
So then are we fine with letting Mr. Gober, and like I say, I know I'm not pronouncing it correctly, but I want to refer to you rather than calling you by your first name, so I will apologize right now for not pronouncing it correctly. Do we want to defer to him to prepare the title?
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Vicky, if I may.
Sure.
Just so like procedurally, this is correct, and there's no ambiguity or concern on how the, how this has been conducted moving forward, would it be appropriate for the Chair to ask for a motion to suspend the rules? That way you're able to call upon and/or discuss with citizen participants without technically breaking the rules of the meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't think about that earlier.
Okay, so you're wanting me to suspend the rules so that you can talk while we're talking?
Well, I mean, you called upon me to come up here, so I came up. But basically, the way that it's supposed to, and I might be wrong, but the way that I've read and interpreted it is that you're supposed to go according to the agenda, and it lines out two sections of public participation. You did call on me, and I should have said something earlier, so I apologize, but it would, it'd be a suspension of the rules because you're no longer following the agenda? I just want to make sure procedurally, no one comes back and says that this wasn't done properly.
But we're on Rules of Procedure.
Right, but I mean, in the agenda for the meeting, because there's a question of concern of uniformity, there has been issues raised by citizens that some people are granted the floor unfairly or unequitably, and that others aren't granted permission to speak. So I'm just saying, if you want to do this, that way it's done properly, in my opinion, it would be to suspend the rules and allow for an open discussion or forum.
Okay, Mr. Gober, what's your?
I believe she does have a point.
Okay.
And I do believe the suspension of the rules is technically the procedure to follow if we want to have dialogue.
Okay, so then I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow.
For dialogue.
And allow for dialogue.
Second.
Oh, I can see, yeah, I made a motion.
I'm like.
My bad, I'll make the motion.
And we're gonna start following the procedure that we've somewhat started with the council meetings. We'll ask for a roll call vote.
Roll call, yeah.
Mr. Hick, well, do you need to do that on a roll call?
No, I'm the Chair.
I could just say, Mr. Hickman?
Yes.
Correct, you're the Chair.
Okay, and Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
And I say yes, too. Okay, so the rules have been suspended to now allow dialogue as we continue on with our agenda. Okey dokey? All right, thank you.
Since we're gonna have open dialogue, Chairman, correct?
But we're gonna open dialogue as we go down through.
That's what I'm gonna open dialogue about right now. So basically, if you're gonna say non-council people, then this document right here, okay, of the Rules for Procedure of Bussara City Council, Bussara, Ohio, updated March 24th, you're gonna have to change all the wording in there because it says in here, any person, all visitors, individuals. Okay, so are you gonna clearly make a definition then in 111 to define what is a non-council member? Because if not, then you're gonna have to go through all of this and change wording because you're making an official change of 111 or adding to it and making a new definition. Am I correct?
I'm not quite sure where you're at.
So if you're changing 111, okay?
Wait a minute, we're not on 111, we're on Rules of Procedure.
Rules of Procedure.
Okay, but she was talking about non-council, that's what you were discussing, non-council members.
Okay, because in 111, that's where Mr. Gurnard referred to the subjects as being non-council members.
As non-council members. So are we gonna define what is non-council members? So.
Are we on the Rules of Procedure?
We are on the Rules of Procedure.
Where in the Rules of Procedure are we?
Okay, A's.
A, yeah, okay.
Right.
We haven't gone far.
Nope. All I'm looking for is a clear definition of the term that you guys are using of non-council member, okay? Because the mayor is a non-council member, the auditor is a non-council member, okay? Any visitor, any speaker, any individual person is a non-council member, correct? So I think you need to clearly define what you're talking about.
Could you show me exactly where we're at on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I can put this to bed.
Yes, right there.
Yeah. Which one?
Well, it's the title, citizen participation, and it was suggested that, well, it was suggested rules for non-council or committee, but now we're running, there's talk of changing citizen participation to state non-council, or citizen participation and possibly then putting in quotes, that being non-council, non-committee individuals.
Okay.
It's definitely something we need to look into.
I just had a thought while I was standing there and listening to Mr. White. Would it maybe be beneficial, you know, it's cross-referenced, so it's referenced in each, you know, the Rules and Procedures reference in the ordinance, if the concern is not a uniform definition, you could probably add something in the ordinance, 111, to state the definition of a non-council member is the same as in the Rules and Procedure. That way you would reference it once, and then you would have a way to reference back to a definition. So you'd have one definition, or vice versa, technically.
That is true.
Number one.
A1.
Yes, as Mr. White has corrected me, A1. Changed invocation, as you see highlighted in yellow, the spelling. Number two, it was pointed out at the last meeting that there was no reference to the fact that the visitors needed to also sign the visitor attendance sheet. So there was suggested the insertion in that, number two, that all visitors are asked to arrive at least 15 minutes prior to opening of the council or committee meeting and sign the visitor attendance sheet. And then it goes on to say, all non-elected officials or city employees not visiting council or a committee as part of their job function are required to sign the visitor attendance sheet. So that was just merely identifying that the visitors also need to sign the sheet. And if anytime anybody from the public wants to come up and address each number as we're talking, the committee, feel free. Number three.
Sure. Before we move on.
Sure.
As this reads, then the people here not as part of their job function aren't required to sign in, they're being asked to sign in.
Excuse me, what did you ask again?
So with number two, are you saying that you want all visitors to be required to sign in?
Yes, because that's what Clerk Wise uses when she's preparing the minutes.
Gotcha. So that's, so the way this reads is all visitors are asked to arrive at least 15 minutes prior to the opening of the council or committee meeting and sign the visitor attendance sheet. So that and includes the asked, which is not mandatory language, it's a request. So they could not do it, and there's nothing you could do about it.
So then what are you suggesting be done there?
Just everyone who comes in is required to sign the signing sheet.
Wait. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure. I'm looking at this, and I, maybe I'm looking at the wrong, I printed off the ordinance, but in the packet, I'm showing completely different language than what you're stating. Are you looking at the, here, here.
Did you get the one, get one?
That's the one I got from another one.
Back there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's because that doesn't have our yellow ones, Miranda. Okay, okay, yes.
Is this the updated one, then? Or not updated?
And I'll tell you what.
Is he looking, are you looking at the updated one, Mr. Gober, or? That's what I'm wondering, if he's got the old.
You don't have what the committee and I are talking about. So right now, it says all visitors are asked to arrive at least 15 minutes prior to opening of the council or committee meeting. All non-elected officials or city employees not visiting council or committee as part of their job function are required to sign the visitor attendance sheet. And does that state that?
Yeah, yeah, because what he's saying reminded me, this is what brought up my question the last time we were here. It sounds like he's reading the old one? Are you reading the new one? Sorry, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to make sure you have a good copy.
What I'm reading is dated Rules of Procedure 924, 924.
He's reading the old one, but in the old, how do I want to say this? He's looking at my notes that I made about what you folks talked about at the last meeting. So take it, take what you're looking at, and that's what he's looking at.
But he's not, because what he just stated says that.
But he was saying what he thought it could say.
But the and is no longer there, because that was my recommendation, I had my notes from the last time, but, because now it reads completely different. Because what he said was and sign into the visitor attendance sheet, because that was my concern, was it said asked, because now it says all non-elected officials or city employees not visiting council or committee as part of their job function are required to sign the visitor attendance sheet.
Right, and then the committee is talking about adding in that the visitors also have to sign the visitor attendance sheet, because that's what you brought up at the last meeting, that there was no reference to visitors having to sign the attendance sheet.
Correct, so as it reads in the packet, there's nothing that says that visitors would have to sign in.
Right.
Yeah, but you would have to ask them, I mean, would you have, could you force somebody to sign in? I guess is my concern.
Now, if that's the question, I can look into that. I can look into whether we can legally do that.
Yeah, because this is like the, this is not what the new revision updates, then. This one's not. Okay, that's why I was getting confused.
Because we're discussing what we want to revise.
Gotcha, so what I had asked was that it state that, you know, you're asked to sign the visitor sheet. Because I mean, you can't require someone to be 15 minutes early either, is what my thought process was, but, okay, now I'm less confused, I'm sorry.
So we understand there what we're doing? Okey doke. Number three, there was discussion at the last meeting by Mrs. Shireman on having phones or not having phones at the council table. We had previously discussed that, and it was decided, the committee decided that, I should say, three of us on the committee agreed that you could have your phone at your table, purpose being if, you know, emergency call, but you're not to be sitting there and playing games and, I mean, there just has to come a trust that, you know, someone's not going to be sitting there and. But Mrs. Shireman brought that up again. She had also, at my request, was going to fill out, I told her to prepare a list of, you know, what she wanted to say and bring it to the next meeting, and I've not been given anything from her. So I guess the committee's thoughts on wanting to still leave it, I mean, we're not going to make any reference that phones are not allowed at the council tables. Is that what we're still, as a committee, wanting to say? That's what we had decided the last time.
In my opinion, anybody can see what we do up here, I mean, you can try to do this, or like, it's all on tape, it's all videotaped, you're doing that to your own peril, people are gonna see that you're goofing off on your phone, unless you're actually physically looking something up as requested to look it up faster than we can on the laptop, other than that.
It's kind of parallel to what Economic Development did on Thursday. When I didn't have my presentation in front of me, I used my phone to get my presentation up for me because I had it there as well.
Okay. Mr. White?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with people having their phones. I have people texting other council members during committee meetings and council meetings, okay? And you can see them blatantly doing it, right on, as Chris said, right on camera, okay? So they're not paying attention to the task at hand, they're actually shooting messages back. I mean, if you want to sit your phone there for emergency purposes or whatever, or you want to use it for your presentation, I have no qualms with that. But when you have people sitting here texting other council members during council or committee meetings, that I do have an issue with.
And I guess my question to you, Mr. White, would be, how do you know that that's what they're doing?
Chris just said it, it's right on camera. I mean, if you're sitting there texting somebody, you're not paying attention to conversation, you're not paying attention as part of council. You're off into your little texting world and not actually paying attention to the task at hand.
And you know that they're texting and not. And you know that they're texting and not doing research.
You can see their fingers going like this, mad man. Okay? It's mad, they sit there and do this, or, as Chris said, there's people that go down here underneath your chair and do it, you know? And I have no qualms of people using it as a professional device whatsoever.
And again, that's where, I mean, my gosh. You can't be sitting here and...
You're not paying attention, you know? That's the whole, that's the whole thing. I mean, I mean, like I said, I have no qualms about using it professionally, you know, for your speech or whatever. But other than that, just put your thumb down. And committee meetings aren't that long.
Right.
Okay. Or councils really aren't that long.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm questioning, though, if number three should even be under citizen participation. I have been reading and reading that over, and I went, my goodness, it's been on the Rules of Procedure, I went as far back as to 2019 Rules of Procedure. Because number three says, "While the council or any committee is in session, the members must preserve order and decorum, and a member shall neither by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings or the peace of the council or any committee, or disturb any member while speaking, or refuse to obey the orders of council or any committee or its presiding officer, except as otherwise hearing provided." I'm not sure why that's under citizen participation.
Did we not see?
Pardon?
Did we not have that conversation? Because I, sorry. I'm not bringing it up.
Well, I didn't have it on my notes that I took at the last.
I pulled up my notes from the last meeting. I do say, "Section B?" on number three. But maybe I didn't share that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll have to go back in. Yeah, because the only thing I have on here is to do with phones.
That was a big conversation, so maybe I let it go. But I did, I did put a little bracket, say "Section B?", I asked the same question, so I'm glad we were on the same page on that one.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
I think I'd have to agree with moving Section 3 under A to B, because I really don't see any mention of citizens, non-council, non-committee, in Section 3. It's mainly just a reference to council and any committee in session as a whole.
Okeydokey, then we can move that over to council participation, and I guess, you know, as we're revising, you can figure out where in the number and change the number order. Is that okay with the committee to allow?
Excuse me?
I'm so sorry, I'm just looking through my notes from the last time. I did put in paragraph four, and this kind of addresses Mr. White's concerns as well. It states, at the end, I added, just to the end, as a question, if this would make it more streamlined, where it says, "Barring from further audience before council or committee and can be removed from the council chambers," and then I state, "outlined by ordinance Chapter 111.21." I mean, that way it's just known where to reference that. I don't know if that's necessary, but that would answer the question if...
So you're saying, "After council chambers, outlined by ordinance 111."
Yeah.
The...
Yeah, and?
21. But where the, whatever the security of, is it 21?
Okay, 111.21.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm thinking, when it talks about "by the presiding officer, barred from further audience before council or a committee," I'm interpreting that to mean it's just, if someone's up there and they're being impertinent, slanderous and all, we can say, hey, you can't talk anymore, you need to, you need to sit down. And that's, you know, barring from further audience, barring from, you know, further talking, but it doesn't mean removal as a committee or a council member, it's just, they're removed from council chambers, they can be, we can ask them to leave.
Correct. It'd be kind of an absurd reading to say that...
And I shouldn't say "coun," this has to do with citizens, that they, if they're being boisterous and whatever, we have the right to say, please sit down, and if they don't, then there's your removal. And I believe that also is where we come up with, outlined, as you say, by ordinance 111.21.
Correct. And I think that it would be a very absurd reading to say that if you were to enforce Provision 4, that it would apply infinitum to all committee meetings and all council meetings in the future. I think that that's kind of what I think Mr. White touched on, right?
Yeah, about being barred.
Yeah.
You didn't have to take legal proceedings to get someone...
Correct. I think that would be an absurd reading of it, but it can't hurt to be more clear.
Okeydoke. Next is number six. I'm just going to the sections where we talked about for changes. Let's see here. There was discussion about, "Public participation shall only address concerns with the city government." And when that was talked about, Mrs. Slater, and that, when I was listening to the audio, it started out with, well, let's go with miscellaneous number five, it's circ there, and then, well, maybe, and we sort of went back and forth on that. And I'm thinking, if we're talking about, and we want to state that public participation shall only address concerns with the city government, I guess my thought is that at number six, when it's talking about visitors addressing council, that that might be where we would want that to be, is in number six, under A, citizen participation.
I'm so sorry. I don't mean to circle back around, but I found my notes from the last time. You asked me how I wanted, how I thought that Section A should be named.
Section?
The whole section, Section A, citizen participation, my recommendation.
The title.
The title, sorry.
Okay.
So I noted here that the reason I want, was questioning that is because it says council participation. You guys have to be here, so I just felt like it was kind of weird. Like, and it's called Rules and Procedures, so I thought, would it make more sense to call it Rules for Council Members, and then you could put Rules for Non-Council Members, and then define it? That was, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, real slow.
Sorry, okay.
Do that again for me, please.
Section B.
Section B.
The title. I had a note that said Rules for Council Members, and I noted here, the reason I was stating that was because it sounds weird to say council participation, when you guys have to be here, it's not like you...
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Like, even if you didn't really actively participate, you'd be here. So, I was saying, would it make more sense, since this is called Rules and Procedures, to name that section Rules for Council Members, and then have Section A being named Rule for Non-Council Members? It'd be more uniform, like accurately... Does that make sense what I'm saying? I'm so sorry. I don't mean to circle back around and confuse you. If it doesn't make sense, maybe come back to it later, but I just wanted to note that on the record, that's why I had that.
Yeah, we'll wait till we get to B, because it's swirling in my head here. So have we decided, where do we want to put, if we even want to put it somewhere, the suggestion that public participation shall only address concerns with the city government? And I mean, it doesn't have to state that wording, that's just what was suggested, that it be made understood to the public, that that's what their concerns are, to deal with the city government, not just to come up and talk about... I don't know what else you could come up and talk about, it's not city government.
I was thinking, what else would become the City Council 4 or Committee 4, other than to talk about city stuff?
But I guess we're back to that comment that you made, that, I always think you said that, I can't remember. Really impressed me, didn't it?
It did. I mean, this, I know, I'm so, I'm so sorry, because I feel like we've repeated conversations from the last time, but it has been a hot minute. One of the things that I stated about this clause is maybe that is covered, and where it says, like, about speaking kindly, which I don't remember which section is the impertinent. When I think of impertinent, I think of like, things that are not pertaining to city business, but if you want to clearly define that, there has been examples recently where people have come up and not discussed city business, and I don't want to call anybody out, because I feel like that's rude. But just think back to citizen participation, and it might, it might come clear to you.
Okay, committee, help me out here.
Okay, I'll try.
You're not only committee.
Oh, I thought we were in public, we're in discussion.
No, I said, committee, help me. Mr. White?
You're on this one.
Okay. If, I brought it up earlier, if it is about what is on the agenda, I think that's what it should stick to. Okay? Unless someone opens Pandora's box and brings up open projects. Okay? All right. So if you stick to what's on the agenda, and they can only speak on what's on the agenda, just like special council meetings, you can't talk about anything else, right? Same rules should apply here in every, every form of committees. You make it very simple. Don't make it complex. Make it simple for people to understand.
So, what are you saying?
Just what I said. Just put the word in there, or words, that only what is on the agenda, that public participation can discuss during that committee meeting. Plan several.
Council or committee meeting?
Yeah, council or committee meetings. Only what's on the agenda. But remember one thing, though, if you bring up open projects, because those are still part of the legal basis of the committee, if you bring those up, then you have that second...
Public participation.
Public participation, where you could give that person that time. And the other thing is, are you going to set a time limit, like you do on council? No. So, I mean, I'm just making something easier to discuss than make it, like, complex.
I'm so sorry. I don't disagree with Mr. White about committee meetings, I feel like that might expedite some things, because especially since you're unable to receive, like, I think we discussed this once, that if someone comes up here and discusses something that's not on the agenda, technically, as it is now, they're allowed to present it to you, but you're not allowed to engage in any discussion. So it's kind of like talking to a black wall, or blank, blank wall, sorry, or grandstanding, in my opinion, because then you just sit here for five minutes and have to listen to somebody talk about something that's irrelevant. However, if someone has a concern for council as a whole, and they're hoping to see something get brought up in a council meeting, and they either aren't added to the agenda, even though they've requested it, and it's relevant to city business, I don't know if you can, it would be appropriate to state that if it's relevant to city business, or you're asking for an action from council, to state that you can't come and do that. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I don't think I quite understand.
Okay. So, a full council meeting, if someone requests to be on the agenda, to, you know, granting permission to visit, to speak, but for some reason, they're not added to the agenda, whatever it may be, but it's not irrelevant to county, to city or council business, and they come up and talk about it, but it's not specifically named on the agenda, would you then be screening or preventing public participation from addressing an ongoing issue? Okay, I'll give you an example. There has been times where I have come personally and said, hey, I don't agree with the attitude or the rhetoric of certain issues, right? And I've came up and said that, I think Mr. White has come up and said that, it has not been on the agenda, so would the presiding officer sit there and say, that's not on the agenda, see you later? You see what I'm saying?
And what agenda are you talking about? Council agenda?
Council agenda. I don't disagree with Mr. White in what he's saying for committee agenda, because you basically can't engage with the citizen participant, non-member, however you want to word it. But, if it's at full council, and they either weren't able to submit something by Monday at noon, or for some reason wasn't added by, you know, their request wasn't granted, but they weren't given a reason, and it's just not there, or they just want to address council on a, maybe a nuance or a behavior, that they aren't able to do that because it's not listed on the agenda. Because how, how it's being proposed is that, Mr. White has stated, that if you only allow citizen participants to come up and discuss what is on the agenda at committee and/or council meetings, then you're limiting their ability to give their opinion on something if it's not on the agenda.
Okay. I think what you're saying, and correct me if I'm wrong...
Sorry if I'm not being succinct.
...goes more to spirit of governing, less towards technicalities and balls and strikes.
Right. I would say, like, if it's not, even though it's not printed on black and white, if you are disagreeing with how something was handled, and/or a behavior, and/or procedurally, or what have you, but it's not specifically listed on the agenda, I'm just saying that the presiding officer could sit there and say, I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda, you need to go sit down. That's what my issue is with having it worded, say that they're not allowed to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I'm sorry. Sometimes I'm not very clear.
Well, and I'm confused, because council doesn't have, I mean, what, I'm not sure if I understand, Mr. White, what you're saying about the council agenda, that if it's...
Council agenda has nothing to do with it.
Right.
Council agenda is set, you're allowed five minutes and talk about whatever you want...
Okay.
...during public participation, or you can submit a letter by Monday at 12, before 12:00 p.m. to council clerk to have a letter submitted and read as correspondence to council.
Correct. But, that's not what I understood you to say. You were talking about public, excuse me, excuse me. Public participation shall only address concerns with the city government. That's what we're talking about, and you're saying to add, to address concerns of what's on the agenda for council or committee meetings.
Let me clarify that. For committees, it would be the agenda, I'm getting, sorry, Chris. So for the committees, it would be agendas, okay? But also during council, okay? You have reading of ordinances where people can get up and voice their concerns about those, that's what I'm talking about, that section of city council where you're allowed to come up and give, pardon, sorry, whatever you want to call it. Come up and speak about any legislation you want during the first, second, third, emergency legislation, whatever, that's where that public participation. Plus, you can only talk about those items only, you can't talk about anything else.
I think that's referred to as visitors' input, is it not? Public participation is, at the beginning of the council meeting, for anybody to come and talk about whatever they want.
Correct. So, I think what you're trying to do is you want to delineate from general participation and general airing of grievances or questions, concerns with the council versus actual participation in specific items, and that it has to be limited to that specific resolution.
Got it.
Right.
Is that, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, because, at the beginning of the meeting... Yeah, I mean, because at the beginning of the meeting, you can say whatever you want, as long as it doesn't violate council rules.
Correct.
Okay, for your five minutes, okay? So, and then, and during committees, you can come up and do the public participation before, you know, when they ask for it.
Sure.
And at the end of the committee. But then you also, during regular council meetings, you have a right to come up and speak on any legislation that is being voted on.
Sure.
But you should, that should only be with what is on that agenda for council.
And it's understood, it's on the agenda.
I know, but some people like to go off record on some of the stuff.
I think everybody's on the same page here, right?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
I'm not confused at all, I'm just saying that, that's what I meant by...
I'm not confused, I don't think you explained it.
No, I was talking about the agenda of council, council and the ordinances being read, and then public participation during that time, and then the committee meetings are totally different.
Okay. Understand?
I understand.
Okay, number seven. We changed the word addressed to address. Number nine. This talks about if any speaker, visitor, and speaking or otherwise shall violate any rules of council, the presiding officer or any council member or committee member shall call them to order, the presiding officer, upon hearing an explanation from the speaker/visitor, must decide on the point of order. If the decision shall be in favor of the speaker called to order while speaking, they shall be at liberty to proceed, otherwise they shall not be at liberty to proceed with their speech. It was discussed at the last ad hoc meeting, the possibility of referencing the, you saw, it's codified ordinance 111.21, which is the security section, making reference to that in that section. Okay, B. Council participation. So is this where you want to come up, Clarissa? And, again, very slowly.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna...
For this old lady.
So, my thought was, council participation dis-sounded its semantics, I'm sorry. My only suggestion was, this document we're discussing is called Rules and Procedure of Council, but I feel it more appropriate to call it Rules for Council Members, and then
A, you want this to be called...
No, 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 so sorry. That's what this whole book, you know, we're reviewing.
Gotcha.
So, I was, my thought was, it may be more encompassing to name this Rules for Council Members, because then it doesn't just focus on their participation.
Good.
And then the same thing, if you wanted to mirror it, non-member, Rules for Non-Members, and then have the definition. That's for section A, that was my thought.
Happy, happy medium, that would be semantically neutral, would say something like council decorum, council behavior decorum, that kind of thing.
Council expectation, expectations of council?
That, no, that wouldn't...
No, okay. Because I didn't...
Is that more along the lines of what you're trying to say you want?
Yeah, well, I was thinking, because it was also brought up about social media, codes of ethics, these kinds of things, those things that may be outside of the actual participation of them in their seat, specifically during a meeting.
Well, I think, I think from a very black and white thing, the rules of procedure wouldn't cover anything outside of the committee, of the meeting.
Okay. So like, the ethics, social media stuff that was discussed previously would be only in the ordinances, correct?
It would have to be its own separate thing.
Right.
It would not, it would not fall under the umbrella of...
Rules and procedure.
Rules and procedure for the committee, or the council meeting.
Okay. Whatever you guys decide, it's fine, I'm sorry.
B two. This is where they talk about having no food on the council tables, and council members and city officers will silence all electronic devices. At our last meeting, council person, Shireman questioned, what are the repercussions if one's phone keeps going off during the meeting? And then again, she also rediscussed council members having no phones at the table. So I think we've already, you know, addressed, um, no phones at the table, there will be phones at the table. I guess if your phone is silenced, it shouldn't be ringing, but I know it was brought up, like, one time, I forgot to silence my phone, and it was ringing.
And it was me, and I feel really bad, because it went off more than once, and I didn't realize it.
And, uh, so that was her concern is, you know, one time, okay, but if it keeps ringing during the meeting, what's the repercussion? So...
So, I kind of looked into this myself, and Robert's Rules talks about incidental motions, so it wouldn't matter when the, I think it's incidental, maybe it's, no, questions of privilege, I apologize. So, questions of privilege, similar to a point of order, you can do a point of privilege. If someone's phone is bothering you, or someone's action is bothering you, you can call a point of privilege and basically say, point of privilege, you know, Mrs. Deschawn, can you please silence your phone? And then, business moves on with, so that way it's not anything being held, but then, at that point, you can, all your other rules can go in about, like, calling, being called to order, you know, so if it keeps happening, then you're, can be held to that standard as well, but... If that's helpful, if you wanted to...
So then, is that something that we need to address within our rules of procedure, specifically, or the fact that it says, if there's nothing in the rules of procedure, we defer to Robert's Rules?
I was gonna say, uh, if it's not specifically stated in the rules of procedure, it's encompassed by the rules of Robert's, uh, whatever it's called.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry.
And it is very encompassing, and that is my understanding of reading what a point of privilege is as well, so that does track.
So again, my question is, we don't need...
No, but the reason I brought it up, and maybe it was a rhetorical question, so I'm sorry if I didn't understand it was rhetorical, but you said, so what are we to do if it keeps happening, what's the, like, repercussions?
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
So, my answer was, you could call a point of privilege, and if someone refuses to silence their phone, then I guess you could probably call, be called to order more than once on the issue, and, I mean, I'd hope no one would get removed for a phone going off, but I guess, I guess it could technically happen, so...
Okay, so you know what you're doing.
Well, if you're gonna ask for my opinion on it, I wouldn't mind a, an admonishment provision, where there would be, after so much, so many warnings, the council clerk would publicly admonish them, not, council president would publicly admonish them.
And is that per meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
So if someone's phone wouldn't go off, instead of jumping right to kicking them out, you could, someone could make a motion to publicly admonish them, and then, at the council president's discretion, publicly admonish them.
Okay.
I just have a question. Are you, or, is that like a synonym to censorship, like publicly censoring, censoring them?
Censure, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Kind of.
Kind of, but more of just like a, an action instead of a, something stated?
It's not as serious as a censure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, hang on. So we're gonna allow council people to text during meetings? You're gonna allow that? Or you're saying, you're saying you can put them on, you can put them on silence, but are you saying that council members or committee, during committee, during regular council or committee meetings, that council is gonna be allowed to text each other back and forth? Or citizens texting or calling other people from the audience?
Well, I guess my thought, back to what I said earlier, is, you know, we could put that in there, in here, no texting, but how are you gonna know if they're texting unless you actually get up and go over and stand? I mean, you can think that they're texting, but how do you really know?
I'm just asking the question, that's all I'm doing.
Like, it's like solitary for all we do.
I mean, if your phone's sitting right there on top of the table, where you can physically see it, and it's silenced, and you have an emergency call come in, I understand that, going back to what I said earlier, that if you need to use it for your professional presentation, because you're, no, other than that, I don't think you guys should be using your cellphones to communicate with the general public sitting out here, or between each other. I mean, I mean, that's...
Well, first off, the Ohio sunshine laws, I think prohibits the body...
Yeah, we're not allowed to use...
...texting back and forth, because the public is to know...
Right.
What is happening up here. In fact, if you even read, you're not even supposed to lean over and whisper to someone next to you, because...
But we've seen that done before.
Oh, I, oh, I know, I know, I know.
Seen it done before. People going over to anybody, either side, and we've seen it done. It's all caught, it's all on camera, we know that, and it's been done. But I'm just saying is, I understand your viewpoint, Vicki, we're not, we're not the some third world... Yeah, we're not some third world country that's doing this, but, to me, if you can't just put your phone down during a very short meeting or whatever, unless it's an emergency call, you know what, then there's something going on, in my book. I mean, because I've seen conversations go back and forth, and you can tell in videos that certain people are texting other people about what to bring up next. Not saying it's true, what I believe to be true by watching it.
Yes.
Would that also be considered a point of privilege, like, if you notice something like that occurring, and then you can point it out, or, I don't know, just from a third person point of view, just listening in?
We have that very down, we're gonna point of privilege.
So in other words, if I would see Zion over there... I could say, point of privilege, and I would call Brian out and say, what are you doing on your phone?
So I guess...
You could.
You could.
That's how that works, yeah.
But, in my opinion, is that's where the import, the unbiased opinion of the presiding officer is where it's important, and it, there is also checks and balances in this, right? So, one member constantly, he or she, I shouldn't put in a certain, certain chair, I'm gonna get in trouble, but if somebody wants to point out that a specific member continually texts, and let's say they're talking to you, I think of like teenagers, when they're like in a conversation with you, but you're trying to talk to them, and then all they're doing is in their phone, they're not paying attention to you, if it's impeding you from doing your job, then you could call a point of privilege. At the same time, I feel that it would be appropriate if someone in the audience has a problem with it, and it's, you know, any, in those specific times, even like if it's regarding, in a council, like, full council, the specific times that are laid out to talk about something, if you have comments on the procedural problems, I think that that should be allowed too, because someone could come up and be like, I find it disrespectful that you guys are texting and not paying attention to what's going on, when it's serious. So, I mean, there's ways to hold each other accountable, I think that's what the whole thing is, is like, you're supposed to act like good standing citizens when addressing these problems, but I, that's my opinion, is if you have a problem with something, doing it, at the same time, the presiding member, chair, whomever, president or committee chair could also say, okay, you've called point of privilege seven times on this person, you know, enough is enough, or, or if that is something that they want to call for a motion for the public, or, you know, public admonishment, then at that point, they can ask for a motion of public admonishment, and then vote on it. So then, that way it's addressed, and then the meeting can go on, and that person has to put away their phone, and, you know, hopefully it doesn't escalate to that point, but I'm just saying that, just treat each other with respect, and respect each other's wishes, I guess, right?
Wouldn't it be nice just to come to a council meeting and not have to worry if...
I don't disagree, Vicki.
And, 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 I mean, I realize, we have to have rules, I, I, it's just...
And this is why I think what, and, and my opinion still stands, that I think that a seminar on rules and procedures would stop a lot of this conversation, because it doesn't have to be in your rules and procedures, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance, it's something that this should maybe be required at the beginning of each session, and I don't think the OML nude officer training is enough, like, you need refreshment on an issue. That's, in my opinion, is that, that this all could have been really cut down concisely to do, you know, mock situations and practice, but that's just my thoughts on it, so...
Okey dokey. Next, number three. This has to do with the dress attire. In number three, we talk about what business attire is. It's identified as gentlemen, they're to be in a suit, sports coat, sweater with necktie or turtleneck. That's during the months of November through February. Ladies during those months, or to either have a suit, dress, or appropriate outfit during those months. Business casual attire is done during the months of March through October, and it's also acceptable for all committee meetings year round. I think we've sort of got away from, and I, and I, and I bring this up, because it's been repeatedly brought up, you know, you've got your rules, you can't pick and choose what you do and don't, um, follow. Business casual attire, I've, you know, just done some Googling on what a business casual attire is. It talks about slacks or business dress pants, dark jeans without holes, button-down shirts. Basically, I think it's more what not to wear with a business casual dress code. They say, you know, don't, well-worn athletic sneakers or tennis shoes, flip-flops, stained or wrinkled clothing, clothing with holes, shorts, crop tops, and clothing with inappropriate logos or texts. And I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, make an enemy of anyone. But this is one of our rules, and... I'm just thinking, maybe with a business casual attire, we should, as I put on here, need to discuss what is business casual attire, just like what business attire's broken out for a little bit, we should do the same with the business casual attire. But again, I mean, the committee doesn't, that's, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up.
I think having a, a definition of what a business casual attire is might help clear that up a little bit, just like, add, like, what we think is business, um, business casual attire, or what Google claims is business casual attire, just so that's in there, so it's clarified, it's defined.
So then, the question I'll ask is, are we wanting to say what we feel business casual attire is, or are you saying we want to look at what the different, and I just pulled out one, just real quick tonight before I came, I have looked at others, and, and they're, you know, they're pretty much the same.
I think we could, um, discuss, or, or as we could adopt a definition.
So is this something that you want to, on your own, look and see what others are saying business attire is, or do you feel comfortable in... business attire is or do you feel comfortable in?
Well, because I've only ever known it as um casual attire. I've never seen it defined as...
Or casual attire, excuse me. That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, um, business casual, which is where I get confused. So I mean, I guess we could make up our own lists of things that would be defined as um business casual attire and bring them to you or to Miranda to send to you if it's appropriate.
Madam Chair, the city of Saris also has its own dress code policy that I can forward to everyone if you would like.
Oh, wonderful.
We could look at that as well.
That'd be a really good start.
Great. Thank you, Miranda. So I don't know, Zion. We may have to stop wearing your queen shirt.
Oh, no, not my queen shirt.
Oh, I know, but...
It's like 80% of my closet.
Is there anything on the back of that shirt?
No.
Well, you could flip it around and...
Turn it inside out.
Turn it inside out.
At least you'll feel you've got queen close to you. Queen just won't be staring at me, huh? Okay, great. Then when we get back to, so we're still on B, number 10. Just took out the word of and replaced it with the word or. And the only other thing I had is questions. It was brought up at our last meeting about a social media policy. And I'm not sure the social media policy, if one is done, would that appear in the 111, the ordinance, not in our rules of procedure? I just didn't know which document it would be appropriate.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Is that it would be in the ordinance, not the procedure.
Great. The same thing with the sexual harassment policy that Mr. Finkhauser had brought up, that he wanted us to consider both for council and elected officials, that would also be something in the 111 ordinance?
Correct.
Okay? Then, excuse me, Chris.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Sorry. Was it also brought up that the city had a policy on that too or not? Did I not hear that correctly?
Yes, the city has a sexual harassment policy. And I believe Miranda indicated she was going to get a copy of that. I think this was before our meeting started and was going to pass that on to Mr. Goldberg for him to take a look at. Then Mr. Finkhauser was also asking if we would look at defining the use of what we call the press table. In other words, who's, I don't want to say permitted, but the table is there for seating of whom. Now that, I think, would probably go under our rules of procedure more than our ordinance because we're just talking about the table.
That would be during the meeting and it would be what happens during the meeting. So I would concur with that.
Okay. So I guess that's something, since we're on our rules of procedure, the table. Now I will say in all the years, 38 plus years that I was employed by the city as the law clerk, that table was where the news media or the media sat. And of course now, you know, we don't, the media doesn't come as often. I think they listen to the audio recording or what have you. I don't know. When we have our council meetings, those of us that are not on the particular committee that, and I should say committee meetings, those of us that are not on the particular committee that's meeting, we move over to that table. So that way only the committee participants or members are sitting here. Also, we've now, well, and it's been that in the past as well, is the administration, like zoning administrator, he's going to come and speak, would sit there. Any city official that's coming to talk, like I say, the wastewater treatment plant when Mr. Wood came to talk or when Mr. Dunn comes. I know when I, and this is just me personally, but when I came to speak before council when I was a quote visitor, citizen, it was just always understood that that's, you know, where I sat. I personally would have never thought of coming over here and sitting at that table. I personally feel that that table should remain for our media, should remain for our council, committee members, administration, special speakers if they need to set up, you know, their apparatus to give a talk or whatever. I feel all visitors, I don't see why there's a problem with the visitors, you know, sitting there in the chairs.
Also, standing committees too.
Like ad hoc.
Yeah, ad hoc or standing committees.
If I may, I've never really seen it as a problem who decides to sit at the table. But I always thought like as, as you thought, it was always just for the press, a committee, council, administration. That's just what I always perceived that side of the room as. Whereas the gallery has always been to me for participation.
That's a good gallery. Thank you.
That's what I always thought.
Think of what I, yeah. Pardon?
Yeah, I don't want to call it the peanut gallery. That seems a little trite.
So does anybody in the audience? Mr. White, because I know that...
I'm going to let you decide what you want to do because, you know...
Because then you're going to do what you told me on the phone?
I will do that precisely. Because you know why?
Greg, if you would come to the podium, please?
Because there is the First Amendment right and there is, when you bring up the press, in the state of Ohio and the federal government, there is no press credentials. Supreme Court has already ruled that anyone can be the press. Anybody who has a social media page, anybody who does correspondence or writes letters or anything is technically the press under the First Amendment. Okay? Matter of fact, because I figured you were going to bring this up, I made my own press passes. Okay? So you know what? That's my constitutional right under the First Amendment. Now, you know, I understand council rules have already said anything back here. And you even brought up before too, hey, if I want to sit down when somebody get up, what if I've always told you, yes, I would give up and give up my seat. Okay? But I still am a firm believer, even though you're an elected official, okay? But then you're not sitting on that as we talked, and I'm not ashamed of what we talked about because I didn't say anything objective to you, is that you're a regular citizen that is allowed to come up and stand at this podium and speak just like a regular resident. Okay? You're not on that sitting committee and you're allowed to get up. What I am offended is, is when people sit back here, okay, and talk from those seats, okay, like they have in the past.
And you've been at fault
Yes.
to that as well. And we've been at fault in not saying, please.
Yes. And I come up. I mean, that's why I said I think you should have an open and frank discussions. Okay? But the thing is, is you have to, you know, people are becoming more and more educated about certain things. Okay? And that's why you said that's the press. The press doesn't come anymore. Hey, that's fine. But you got to remember too, there are constitutional laws. And they don't, policy does not trump law.
And I know, but Greg, I'm trying here...
I understand where you're coming from. I'm not, I'm not begrudging you whatsoever tonight.
Well, your open forum, although...
No, we're going to wait into that, huh?
No, we'll wait for public participation.
Oh, okay. Cool.
So we're on the subject of the table. So do you want to elaborate to the public and to this committee what it was that you told me, because I'm the individual that you are referring to in your editorial or letter to the editor?
Well, you're admitting to it. I didn't admit to anybody.
Well, I'm mentioning it.
No, it's fine.
What you told me that you would do if you were not allowed to sit at that table.
No, I said that. I didn't say that. I said the sign that someone put up. Okay? All right? We've been sitting there for months and months and months. And yes, Vicki, you're correct. You said a few times about people sitting there. Okay? But nothing was done. But then all of a sudden, someone, except for council president, puts a sign up that says, "We're not allowed to sit there." Okay? That's a constitutional issue. Okay? So I'm not saying it was going to do it. I said, "I'm allowed to do it." And I could do it. And I do know an attorney in Cincinnati, and just to let you know, that is a civil rights attorney. Okay? And they're becoming more and more and more and more because of all the crap that goes on. Okay? Brian knows this. It's becoming the new specialty.
I don't know if Brian knows it or not.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry. I apologize to you, sir. But it's, it's becoming a new specialty in the United States, constitutional law attorneys. That will take any case pro bono and fly with it, you know? And actually, the sixth, the sixth district court of appeals, which Ohio is part of, won't touch this subject at all. Supreme Court has, but the sixth district will not touch it yet. They won't even comment on it yet.
Okay, so we're...
So I mean, basically, you know what, I was offended, not going to lie about it. I was offended, especially the person who was tapping their finger at the table when I looked at it. Somebody got offended me taking a picture of it. It's public, public place. Photography is allowed and anywhere in the general public, you can record. You can do whatever you want.
All right. Why don't we hold off and we'll address that when we talk about your letter to the editor, which maybe we can't do under public participation. Can we discuss that?
Discuss the letter to the editor for public participation?
Yeah.
So as far as I understand it, public participation in the meeting does not include public participation outside of the meeting.
So in other words, I cannot address this letter to the editor?
Not while we're talking about rules of procedure, I don't believe.
But when we get down to public participation, well, it's a special ad hoc meeting. And, okay, well then I'll just wait and discuss that when we have the council meeting. Wonderful. Okay, so I guess the question is then, what are we going to do about the table? Clarissa?
My suggestion is in all government and debate, I feel like there's always a happy medium. And I feel that if the precedent would take, you know, if the... If there is a public speaker presentation, whereas in the, you know, in the committee meetings, wherever those, like those things take priority over the public wanting to sit there.
And I'm just thinking, common courtesy to the group.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I think it's, I think sometimes it may, and you know, a conversation between council members is not wrong. If, if two council members are talking about something that they're going to present to the committee, that's not a breach of sunshine laws because it's not a quorum and it's not in session. So it's not whispering to one another while the committee meeting is going on. It's, hey, Chris, did you bring this stuff for this, this one thing that we were going to discuss? Because we went to a meeting. Did you, did you bring this? And then, and then you two can have a discussion because you went to the same meeting and then you were like, hey, are you going to talk about this or am I going to talk about this? And I understand and completely agree that for committee meetings, maybe that can be the, I guess, the, if they're, during full council, if there's visitors that have been granted the right to speak and they need to present, then I think that that table should be for the people to lay their stuff out, if they have visuals or if they need access to the, to the camera or not the camera, the TV or if they need, and from sitting from home, it is kind of weird for someone to have a presentation and the camera zoom in on them and then there's like, they're presenting here, maybe one of the members is sitting and then all of a sudden you have citizens sitting right in front of them and then it's kind of hard to like see what's going on. So I think, in my opinion, if there's a presenter at a council meeting that needs access to that table, or maybe even if someone's granted the right to speak, that they get like privilege over that table. And then secondly, if, during the committee meetings, I don't disagree that something can be taken wildly out of context as being, you know, I don't know how you want to word it. Not transparent. I don't know. You know, you might just hear like two or three words, but they're really just having a discussion on what they're going to present during the meeting. I don't know.
I'm going to have lunch.
Right, right. I mean, I, I think that, you know, I think if it's like a teacher's lounge or a, you know, employee, you know, whatever, a place for you to sit, kind of relax. And I don't, I don't disagree with that. But I think if neither of those things are happening, there is not a presenter, then at that point, then I don't think there's anything wrong with someone sitting there, nothing else is going on. But that all should take priority over it since that's what it's used for, I guess. And was there another table that used to be in here that's sitting out in the hallway? I mean, if someone needs a table, because I kind of sometimes need a table, could the table just come back in here and it'd be like?
There used to be a table over there alongside where the coat rack.
That way there's still a table designated for citizens. And, and you know, you guys already defined that this is your space here. Then I don't understand when you need respite during committee meetings, like having a place to sit. You know, I don't disagree with that. So, but that's my opinion.
Okay, so committee, what's your thoughts on the, the table?
I think we could always go the unchaotic route and just get rid of the table.
I still think it goes down to common courtesy. Young companies means everything was going on. Somebody can tell us that there's a presenter there. You got, you got paperwork back there. It says there's a speaker talking about something. You can see they got a mic set up. You can see they got stuff set up there. Common courtesy would tell you, you know, maybe I should sit over here today. I don't really see why we have to have anything for that. To me, it seems like common courtesy about, I don't see why we have to have a rule on it.
I will agree to that.
And I also... I know, Mr. White, that you had brought up that, you know, nothing had ever been said at the beginning of the year and you are absolutely correct. But I guess my question would be, so if I had said to you, "Mr. White, you're not allowed to sit there," you'd have been fine?
I ask you one. I ask you one.
Why you couldn't sit there?
Yeah.
Okay, let me ask you this. Remember all the meetings you and I would come to and we'd sit together and we sat in the gallery? You not once got up and came over here, but all of a sudden now...
Twice I did. Because I had a lot of...
Well, okay, we as a committee are going to decide, and I guess you'll have to do what you feel you need to do. And all I'm asking for is common courtesy.
I'm expecting the same out of you.
I'll second that.
Out of you two, man.
Excuse me?
The same out of you.
Would you like to come to the podium and say that?
Yes, I would. No, probably. The only thing I would like is the same courtesy back. That's all.
I'm being courteous to you.
No, I didn't say that. The same courtesy.
What, to sit there?
To anybody else, not just me, but anybody. Not just me, anybody, the same courtesy. If someone came in and sat down...
Oh, definitely. That they will be asked to sit in the gallery?
I would, if you're going to do that, then make the rule. Make the rule.
Okay, so we've decided that that table will be for media, presenters at council, special, or committee meetings, committee members themselves.
I see no issue with that.
In other words, it's not used by visitors. Visitors that, you know how to word that.
Correct.
All right, next. Should reference of the above... Oh, we already discussed that. So, we already know what they're doing, okay? All right, we got that. Okay, next. Is ordinance 11-2024. Page two, under cross-references. Back at the July 1st 24 meeting, Mr. Gerner was to have included reference to the rules of procedure for Bucaris City Council, and that just wasn't done.
Okay.
So, we're asking for that to be included. Page three. Oh.
There's a couple ordinance, of course, my phone died. See, I used my phone to pull up my notes, too. Thankfully, I printed today, but my phone died. On there, I think I briefly mentioned it to you that I said it may be beneficial to cross-reference the powers given to legislation in the cross-references. So, like, the 733, the 705, I can't remember what it was. 733, hold on.
731.45, Ms. Conda?
Yeah, we talked about that one, but there was another one. Give me just a second. 733.09, which is the president. And then there was 731.05, powers of legislative authority.
And that's under cross-references?
Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Did I miss that? I looked at your, I asked for the updated one, 733...
Yeah, it's in the old one. Yeah, it should be in the one that you...
I see 733.72.
731.05. You're looking under ordinance 111?
Yeah, the one that you sent me when I asked if you had the notes. I asked for the notes. You sent it to me. Am I not seeing, what am I not seeing here?
You got the email that I sent to you today?
Yeah.
Because I sent you and Erin an email with these that we're talking about there?
Yeah, this is what I'm looking at, right?
Well...
Oh, I'm sorry. The one you sent me today, I printed it off. I don't see 733...
Yeah, under cross-references, there's composition.
Okay, 731.05, you're right. I misspoke. But 733.09 is not.
Okay.
Sorry.
733.09.
President of Legislative Authority of City.
And excuse me?
President of Legislative Authority of City.
President of Legislative Authority. And you're feeling that should be cross-referenced, why?
Because it states what their powers are.
Okay.
Powers and duties, I guess.
Okay. So, is that something that we want Mr. Goldberg to look into? And if he feels that that's an appropriate cross-reference?
I can look into that.
Is that okay with the committee, or?
That's fine with me.
Okay, then next we go to page three, 111.04, interrupting. This is where it says, "No member of council shall be privileged to disturb or interrupt another member in possession of the floor except by a call to order." Discussion was held at the last meeting asking or stating if this wording is sufficient or if reference should be made to 111.22. And the 111.22 is the... Oh, no, the 111.22, that was the new punishment and expulsion of council members that Mr. Gerner placed into the ordinance. So, "No member of council shall be privileged to disturb or interrupt another member in possession of the floor except by a call to order." Miranda, or Miranda. Clarissa?
I guess it rhymes, right? I'm just realizing this. I know call to order, would it also be like, points of priv... Like, I guess, interrupting, call to order. So, like, questions of privilege, questions of order, like... I guess now I'm questioning call to order. Like, if someone's out of order and they have to be brought to order, I understand that, but interrupting, but point of privileges, point of orders, incidental motions, technically, by definition, you don't have to be... So, what I'm looking for, recognized to do those? So, technically, by the way, this is worded, I would say it's probably inappropriately worded. It could be misconstrued that this states that you can't do point of orders or points of privilege or any other incidental motions. Am I wrong? I hope I'm wrong. Because call to order is like a verb, right? Call to order being called to order would be like...
I don't know.
If someone's out of order, okay, all right. My question is, you know, unless motion takes precedent or something, because there's different motions that take precedent to the floor, so.
Okay, 111.05, recognition before speaking. This is where they wanted to add in "or committee." Before, it just said, "For all purposes, save that of seconding motions, no member of council or committee shall be entitled to any privileges." We just added "or committee," "or committee chair." These conclusions were discussed at the last meeting. And then discussion was also held on the possible inclusion of point of order in 111.05, since it was felt this section states something different than Robert's rules. That was you, Clarissa?
Yeah, this kind of ties into that, too. And I've done some more deep diving into this. There are motions that, according to Robert's rules, takes precedent. Point of order is just one of them. A lot of them are called incidental motions. Basically, it just happens at the time of, you know, when something occurs. There's a whole, there's a whole table of rules regarding motions. So, I guess maybe you could reference that unless outlined by... I don't know how you want to word that. This table and Robert's rules. Because there's a bunch of different ways that technically you could interrupt someone who's speaking. So...
So, we're looking to...
I said point of order before, but I guess if you want to extend on that, it's not just point of order that takes precedent. There's other motions that would take precedent and that are outlined in the table. I don't even know what it's called. Hold on.
And this is, again, rather than saying...
Outlined by.
I mean, not saying anything and just deferring to Robert's rules. This is back to your comment that...
But it basically, I thought, states that, the way it's worded is basically say, like, you can't. Because it's speaking in definitive...
Well, my understanding of the resolution is that anything that specifically conflicts with Robert's rules controls. That's my understanding.
Right, so my question is, was that a confliction?
That I can look into.
Because if it is, then my suggestion was to defer or have it worded in a way that doesn't supersede Robert's rules, I guess, if that makes sense. Because you don't want to sit there and have to define what all incidental motions you're allowed to bring up at the time. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
That does make sense.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
I appreciate that.
I understand what you're saying.
Good. Okay. Next, we go to page six. Voting required, exception. Upon every call of the ayes and nays, every member present shall vote unless unanimously excused. The question came up at the last meeting. What if a vote is not cast and excused? So, Clarissa, was that where you were asking, what if a vote isn't made and that person isn't excused for making or giving a vote?
So, there's been more than one, sorry. So, there's been more than one person who has mentioned in conversation with me or online that they noticed that, we can hear you because you're miked, right? So, maybe you can't when everyone's saying it. It might just be the acoustics of this room. But we can tell that there was not a majority vote. And sometimes I can tell out here, too. Like, we might hear two voices and then nobody else respond. So, I guess maybe my thoughts, and this has kind of been adopted by some council members, is that motions requiring a two-thirds majority maybe have to take a roll call vote? I mean, because I think I discussed this with you. It's like, if you guys are, I hear no objection. Are we okay with this? And if no one objects, then that's where silence is agreement. But like, if someone asks for a vote on something, then it can be asked for, and at that point, you would take like, a roll call vote. So, like, your guys' discussion here right now, you're not needing to take a vote because no one's speaking out and... In this debate, like, no one's speaking out and... What is the word I'm looking for?
Opposition?
Thank you. But if someone was like, stating they didn't agree, then instead of just taking the ayes and nays, that way you can take a roll call. So, for the record, it states who approves and disapproves.
Well, I know that Kevin has started doing the roll call, and I like that. I hadn't done it at the last committee meeting because no one else was doing it. And I thought, well, maybe we're not going to do this. And then, so yes, I like the roll call.
It's better run, yeah.
Because then we know that everyone is voting, and you know how they're voting.
And I mean, there's times where, there's things when kind of, you know, when Kevin was... Help me out here. And he was Row Roberts Festival Director. Like, he was excused.
Right.
Right, so like, that's different. But I think this way, there's no one pointing finger saying, "You didn't vote." Like, it's just, and that way, for the record, the public knows who's voting for what. But like, things in discussion, I don't think you really need a yaze, or, you know, you don't need to roll call it in like, informal debate. But if it's something where it takes a motion that has to have a two-thirds majority to get like, referred back to council or, you know, passed legislation or...
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Couldn't we just, in that section, make it that roll call? That that's what we're going to do?
You can do that, Pam.
And we just want to do roll call vote just for a motion that deals with two-thirds? Or do we just want to do it with every motion, or?
That's a good question. I can look into that.
I don't think, I don't see, I mean, we'd have to do it for like, the minutes or anything like that.
Oh, okay.
I can see, you know, if it's a motion for a vote to have something, ordinance made, maybe you went for that, yes, but, or to pass it on to the next section.
What do you think, Zion?
I think having just the roll call vote for everything decides, just like a minute approval, would need a roll call vote.
And the same thing with like, collectively accepting the committee reports?
Yeah.
Same thing that we have.
The major goodies. You got that there?
I do have, though.
Right. Okey-dokey, page seven. 111.18, invocation. This is on our order of business. This is something that, again, is on our order of business, and it's something that has not been done for quite a while, not just with our council, but previous. We had discussed at the last meeting of putting in the word optional. That would allow us to not have to go with the suspension of the rules if we skip it. I have received several emails, and I forwarded those on... Well, one email was sent to all of us council members by an individual who, if I'll, I'll just read it. It says, "I see council is restoring invocation at council meetings. Is this going to be exclusive to Christian-only denominations? Or will it include all faiths and belief systems that exist in our community? Will there be stipulations of who's allowed to speak? Is it only the local churches and their choice of adherents..." Adherents, I'm not pronouncing that correctly, "who are welcomed, or are other groups going to be invited? Not all who worship attend a church. Some travel to other communities to their respective houses of worship, like those of the Jewish and Greek Orthodox persuasions. There's also those who don't have a belief at all. There's also those who consider themselves nonreligious, which also happens to be the fast-growing religious group in our country. How does the city of Bucaris plan on representing the entire community without discriminating against minority religious affiliations?" That's one constituent that sent an email. Then I had another one stating, "After viewing the last meeting held on August 19, 2024, the Special Ad-Hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure, et cetera, I was compelled to make a suggestion about the invocation step in the Order of Business. It is my suggestion that the invocation should remain and not be optional. I suggest the rule should state that a list of local clergy or members they may suggest from their church who are willing to attend and present the invocation shall be created and maintained by the council clerk. Before each council meeting, the council clerk shall schedule a person from that list to present the invocation. If the council clerk is unable to schedule a person from that list, the council president or presiding council person shall ask for a volunteer from the visitors to present the invocation. If the council president or presiding council person is unable to get a volunteer from the visitors of the council meeting, the council president or presiding chairperson shall call upon the city officers and council members for a volunteer to present the invocation, or, if willing, the council president or presiding council person may present the invocation. If the council president or presiding council person is still unable to get a volunteer or not willing to present the invocation, the council president or presiding council person shall call for a short period of silence to allow each individual to pray or meditate according to their own beliefs for wisdom and guidance of their decisions and actions related to the council meeting. I believe the invocation is a very important step in the Order of Business and should not be omitted either by making it optional or by suspension of the rules." Well, let's see. Now, I've had a third, and this is from a council member who responded to one of the constituents' email, and she's saying, "I personally don't believe that invocation should be on at all. Sadly, we have never covered all of our constituents when we chose to do invocation. In the past, only certain religions, churches have been contacted, and very few actually responded. Our founding fathers kept church and state separate for a reason. Many have come to this country due to religious persecution. If we cannot or choose not to incorporate all of our constituents, there should be no invocation. Every time this is brought up, an issue arises. We need to stop doing things for only a part of our community. For far too long, we have ignored many different groups within our city for the sake of a few. If you wish to pray, pray on your own in your belief. One should never do this for show, and we should never use our positions in government to force our beliefs onto others. I know not everyone agrees with my views, but that just reinforces what I have stated. Also, for anyone insisting on invocation, we open the city up to yet another lawsuit. I feel that alone is reason enough to avoid such things." And then one other council person replied and said, "I am in total compliance with so-and-so. His examples are spot-on. No need to bring all different religions into the mix. The Lord's Prayer would be perfect. The short period of silence is the perfect resolution."
So.
I think, I think keeping it optional just keeps us out of trouble. And if we were to do just a moment of silence, that also works, just so everyone has a chance to pray on their own, pray for themselves, what have you. Keeps us out of any legal trouble, per se.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I also think if you were going to do something like invocation, moment of silence would work for me, too.
If I may.
No, you may not. I'm teasing.
Can I see your press pass?
Can I borrow yours? My only thought is, if you call it a moment of reflection, that would include, that would be honoring, I think you were going to be careful about how you word, how it's introduced, or the script that you use and that. Because I do think, just from what I've seen and have, you know, had exposure to, and I, like, I went to, actually, I went to Israel and studied religion. You just have to be very careful about how this is presented. I think that a moment of reflection is even nice because then if you don't want to pray, or you're, you know, you can have a moment to take a deep breath and realize what you're. Text on your phone, yeah. You know, you don't have to, you know, you can't force people to do it. But I guess that, that way, you know, I think staying out of that realm, you know, giving people a moment to observe whatever they feel appropriate, that is something that I don't think is necessarily bad. And at that point, if anyone, you could probably use that if there's, I see there was like a flower fund, you know, in there somewhere. You could even use that as, you know, a moment of reflection for if someone passes or what have you. But that way, you're staying out of the realm of identifying any specific religion, but that's just.
I like that, moment of reflection. And I'm wondering if we do that, then do away with the word that we were thinking of, optional. And it's, we're just, it's there, and it's just, we always do it.
Yeah.
Moment of reflection.
Yes. All right, next. Under 111.18. Granting permission of visitors to provide input regarding, how the old reads, granting permission of visitors to provide input regarding communications and petitions, or no, regarding the reports read by chairpersons and special committees and of city officers. It was brought up that we might want to include in there, giving input regarding communications and petitions along with the reports read by chairpersons and special committees. And I think the thought behind that was, it was indicated that maybe, you know, there would be a communication or a petition that was read at the beginning of the meeting, and someone may have something to, you know, add to it, what have you, and that's done after the public participation. So if they were allowed to give their input during that second quote, public participation, where they're allowed to ask about reports read, city officers, what have you. Talk so I don't fall asleep. I've been up since.
I see no problem with that, no.
No, I don't either.
I have to question how often someone's, you know, but it's there, and it's available. All right. Next, page nine.
I like this one.
Oh, excuse me. Under 111.20, yeah, page nine, under C, the inclusion of the word chamber. Posting of notices about special meetings on the council chamber door. Chamber was left out by me. And then page 12, 111.21. Let's see, that is our security, council rules for security. And the questions that were brought up or questioned was that where it states, "Non-council member," and that was where before the individual was referred to as speaker, that we asked Mr. Gernert or Attorney Gernert to change that and call, and he changed speaker, and now identifies that individual as a "non-council member." And it was discussed that we should revise that to state, "Non-council member and/or noncommittee member." So throughout, wherever it talks about "non-council member," adding or changing that to say "non-council member," or I guess adding "and/or" "noncommittee member." Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then censorship. Per Roberts' rules, we're talking about adding censorship into this ordinance, per Roberts' rules and any additions not referred to in Roberts' rules. It's my understanding that, you know, we could take Roberts' rules and add to that for our own. Is that true or not?
That's my interpretation, yes. Yes, as I understand it, Roberts' rules is only the catch-all for what is not expansively addressed by this resolution.
I was looking at some papers later this afternoon, and they talk about, well, this one was from a city when I was getting some information several years ago. Barberton, I think it was. And they have a censure rule. Oh, I, you know what? I apologize that I didn't pass these out. Miranda, may I?
I'm going to get up here.
I need you to move. Stephanie, no.
Thank you.
And I'll see that, Clarissa, that you get a copy. I don't think I have any extras here. And Mr. White, I'll get you a copy as well. But it talks about the council conduct. I mean, just, I don't know if this is something maybe you want to look over and then.
In our next one.
But it talks about decorum. It says, "A public meeting must be conducted in an orderly and expeditious manner while maintaining discourse and deliberation in a civil, respectful, and cordial manner. Number two, disruption at a public meeting. No council member may engage in conduct that disrupts a public meeting by behaving in a disorderly, contemptuous, slanderous, profane, or abusive manner towards any other council member or any member of the public. Treatment of the public. No council member may show signs of partiality, prejudice, or disrespect toward a member of the council. Questions by council members to a member of the public addressing council should seek to clarify or expand information. No council member shall be belligerently challenged or belittled a member of the public addressing council. Social media. Council members who use social media to communicate with the public should do so in a respectful and professional manner. Council members should not defame, slander, make threats, or make posts that violate this ordinance. A council member who violates the council rules at a committee meeting, council meeting on social media, or a council of the whole meeting is subject to censure. Censure is defined to express severe disapproval of someone or something, especially in a formal statement." Then there's a censure hearing. Any council member may ask council that another council member be censured. A majority of council must vote to hold a council of the whole meeting for censure. One vote shall be taken. Failure to receive a majority vote is the end of the censure discussion of the event presented to council. Following a majority vote to hold a council of the whole meeting for censure, an accused council member may defend themselves at hearing. An accused council member who wishes to hire representation may call for a one-time continuance of the hearing to allow for retention of representation. The accusing council member shall present evidence supporting censure. The council of the whole may ask questions of both the accusing council member and the accused council member to determine if censure is appropriate. At the conclusion of the hearing, council of the whole must vote by a two-thirds majority to find censure appropriate. At the conclusion of the hearing and following a vote to censure, council of the whole may find the original request for censure was unwarranted. Council may then vote by a two-third majority to censure the accusing council member for bringing an unwarranted claim of censure before council. Unwarranted is defined as not having any serious purpose or value. I don't know, like I say, that was just something I found. I don't know, have you found any?
I sent a bunch of them, but I don't know where, you know, I got too much here.
Yeah, okay. But I think this is something that we were talking about, right, that we wanted to set up a censure rule?
Yeah, I think if I'm remembering how the conversation went, is that the concern was that there's a lot of unresolved things that happen in this chamber between members, things that probably shouldn't be happen or happening, or where the, either the, you know, the chair or the presiding officer or president hasn't, I don't want to say squashed, but you know, appropriately addressed as being breach of procedure or decorum. And I think that the best course of action is for these transgressions to be able to be addressed, so censorship would be important. I do also think that, you know, maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but that kind of comes into the penalty. And there is like a reference of the investigative, in the ORCs, it states that the legislative body does have investigatory powers and can issue subpoenas and compel counsel, compel testimony? That's the word I was looking for. Sorry. I could see the word, I just couldn't, couldn't think of it. But I do think that sometimes behavior escalates past that, and that's where, I guess, maybe you have to protect the body from the disruptive minority. And, you know, that's a whole nother discussion that I've sent information on. The one I emailed, I don't know if I emailed everybody. I think I might have just emailed you, too. I'm sorry. The pamphlet I handed you before the meeting started.
Oh, yes.
That, the very last page talks about municipalities.
The members' brief?
Yes. And I think that, you know, it states you have the ability to govern yourselves, and I don't think that, even Roberts' rule says that, like, severity, I think, is important, or they state severity is important. But the, it's titled, "Recall for elected municipal officers," and then it outlines that according to the opinion of the LFC, that it's only that first section that's eligible. So that maybe could, I don't know where you want to have censorship. Maybe that's penalty. I don't know. Where you want to have censorship? Oh, my gosh, that's such a hard word for me. Censorship stop and penalty start, I guess that's the question, too, but. But I also think you can't have people unilaterally making decisions and completely bypassing the authority of the voting body. So I don't know how you want to muster that, but.
Well, this is a good rule on its face. However, it's hard to judge it by, without seeing what surrounds it. So where did you pull this from?
Several years ago, on the ad hoc committee, I was contacting various municipalities throughout the state of Ohio to find out how many minutes they provided the visitors to speak. And Barberton sent me their whole rules, so I could email or scan that and email all that. I just pulled out this censorship part.
Sure. The problem is, most, most rules tend to, by nature of human touch, mesh with the rules as a whole. So taking it out and trying to jam it into our rules means that it wouldn't flow as well. So without seeing the rest of it, I don't know what else is in the rules that need to be there to support it.
Okay. Not a problem.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okey dokey. Next. 111.22. Punishment and expulsion of council members. At the last meeting, I believe, Chris, it was you that questioned where it talks about to be heard, let's see, well, I'll just read that. "Council may punish or expel from a meeting any member for disorderly conduct or a material violation of its rules." violation of its rules. No expulsion shall take place without first having the disorderly conduct or rule violation be attempted to be remedied through a point of order pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order. The concurrence of two-thirds of all members present nor before the subject matter has been member has been given an opportunity to be heard unless the circumstances pertaining to the disorderly conduct do not allow such opportunity." And, Chris, I believe you were asking for a little more elaboration on, well, what are those circumstances?
Right.
That wouldn't allow such an opportunity? Some other rule, goody, that we can... Are you thinking?
I'm trying to reconcile it. Then I'm gonna ask you to repeat the question. Sure. All right, repeat the question, please.
Where it talks about, "Before the subject matter has been given an opportunity to be heard unless the circumstances pertaining to the disorderly conduct do not allow such opportunity." What would those circumstances be that wouldn't allow? And I suppose it's just the whole steps. The concurrence of two-thirds before the subject member has been given opportunity to be heard. This was new verbiage that Mr. Gerner had put in.
Well, it sounds to me like it's a range, so higher than disorderly conduct, but lower than pandemonium. Somewhere in that range would prevent you from being able to conduct the procedures due to not quite pandemonium, but more than, oh, not quite pandemonium, but more than disorderly conduct.
So is that where we want a definition of?
I recommend that.
Okay.
I think I mentioned this, I worked in prison for four years, and we, the police also use this escalation of force, you know, when you do this, what are you allowed to do? I think this kind of translates a little bit, it kind of runs along that line. Obviously, it's not, no one's gonna be throwing fists, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that, like, if someone is escalating, you can take a preventative measure one step higher than what they're escalating to. I think that's prob, does that make sense, what I'm saying? So if someone is beyond disruptive, but they haven't yet, that kinda fits, I guess. So that way you can take a measure to mediate or prevent any further escalation of the situation. I don't know how you wanna word that. Good luck with that one.
Okay.
And then I guess I was kinda confused because we discussed, I didn't realize this, we said punishment, but then we also said penalty?
Excuse me?
So on here, 111.22, it states punishment.
Right.
Now, again, this might be a semantics thing, but I remember going back to when Mr. Gerner, our attorney Gerner, originally, we had this discussion before we saw this revision of the ordinance. He talked about the 111.99, but I'm questioning now, is this a synonym issue here, punishment and penalty?
Well...
Is that the penalty?
Um, he had, the notes I had was, he was gonna put in a penalty clause, but he didn't...
Yeah, 'cause that was where, like, you know, removal of, you know, privileges, like committee meetings, removal from committees. That was, was that the discussion?
Well, I just know that I had on my notes that he was going to do a 111.99.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if he added the 111.22 instead of the 111...
In place of the 111.99?
That's just a thought that I just had.
That's what it looks like to me, too.
Okay. That I don't know.
And I guess that kinda, that's where I guess you're gonna have to, there's something that maybe I've, where I've read in Robert's Rules, and of course, like, you know, this is the default, it's not what, this kinda summarizes my thoughts, though. It says, "Formal disciplinary procedure should generally be regarded as a drastic step reserved for serious situations or those potentially so. Proper and tactical handling of the case of the prime, is of prime importance, it's usually best interest of the organization to first make every effort to obtain a satisfactory solution to the matter quietly and informally." So my thought is, like, that's where, like, an escalation of, I don't know how you translate that into law, but, or into the ordinance, I mean, it is law. But you could maybe put something in there, like, upon the discretion of the council for serious matters, then they can, you guys can move to do whatever you find, see fit, you know? I guess you're not gonna give someone a slap on the hand if they stab someone in the neck, you know? Like, I mean, obviously not in council, but you know what I mean? Like, that's what I'm saying, like, maybe the penalty matched the offense, I guess. But I think that's the most important, 'cause you don't want it to be like, I also feel like all of this needs to be done by, you know, a two-thirds majority, that, I think that's important, too, that, and then my only other question is, this has come up, but when a member was removed from the council meeting, they were allowed to vote for themselves? And I don't know if that is, when a member was removed, there was a motion to remove a member from council meeting? That member was allowed to vote for themselves? Is that a situation where they shouldn't be allowed to vote for themselves? I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, that's a question that I had, and that's more my personal, I guess, question. I don't know if that'll come up, but, you hope not, but...
Okey-dokey. Chapter 113, on page 13, same thing under cross-references. Putting in the rules of procedure for Bussar City Council, just like we did under 111. Then on 113.01, included the word courthouse. Crawford County Courthouse Digital Library, that was a word that I had left out. Page 14, under 113.02, just adding of three words, which I had also left out on the original, original. And the wording would be that legislation, copies of the request for legislation form are distributed to the committee chair or anyone requesting. And I do wish to say thank you to our former council clerk, Rebecca Warren. She had mentioned on the Facebook post that at the last meeting, I kept referring to Scribner errors, and the correct pronunciation is Scrivner errors with a V, and I was using the V, so I thank Rebecca for bringing that to my attention, and hopefully I won't make that mistake again.
It's kind of ironic, because a Scribner's error is just a simple mistake.
Yes. Which, yeah, I just said mistake, but they, they've used that throughout, so I thought, okay, I'll use it, but I used it and didn't pronounce it right, so. That's it for the ordinance 11, or ordinance number 11-2024, our proposed ordinance, dealing with chapter 111 and 113. I would like to, however, if I may, move back, one thing I forgot under rules of procedure for Bussar City Council. I had received an email from Miranda, and she asked, she said, "I would like to request that notification of absences," in parentheses, "attendance of members is addressed at the meeting tonight, as it will be beneficial to my position as council clerk." So I think that's something that we want to address in our rules of procedure. And Miranda, do you wanna elaborate a little? I'm assuming, well, I'm not gonna assume, you say.
So my office keeps and maintains all of the attendance records for all of you, so it would just be more beneficial if I knew ahead of time about the absences and then could account for it. And I know in previous, we've had instances of no quorum or lack of quorum, and it would be beneficial for me to know of those things ahead of time as well, so that the proper notice can be given to, not just the members of council, but also the public as well.
You look like you have a question for me.
No, I'm thinking. So I guess that's where we need to come up with some verbiage as to when does a council committee member...
Oh, goodness, sorry.
...contact Miranda, you know? I mean, is it the day of the meeting, 24 hours before, I mean...
You get the verbiage thing, too, or...
Yeah, yes.
I was gonna say, that would be up to you guys.
If I may.
Reasonable notice?
Yes, what would, excuse me?
A reasonable period of time, unless otherwise explained, like, as an emergency, et cetera. You know, like, some of these things you can't account for ahead of time, like, somebody, I mean, worst-case scenario gets in a car accident on the way here, you know what I mean? You don't look out for those things.
And then, of course, we're back to what I may think is a reasonable period of time.
Right, right, which is what I was just about to say, a happy medium would just be, say, a reasonable period of time and let that be determined at a later date by the courts, if it ever comes up.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions since we brought up absences.
Okay.
I don't disagree, I think if you have a, if your council clerk is in charge of tracking the absences and why, and then they're, you know, maybe being acquired by third parties of why, that maybe the best thing would just be for all absences to go to her, instead of, like, it being, like, that be her administrative duty as council clerk, right? Because I know, I know before there was talks that it was like council president, or like, maybe another member, or like...
Oh, no, we, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, cool.
That Miranda will be the one that council members, committee members are to contact and say, "We're not gonna be able to attend." And I know there's never, you've never, a member's never had to say why, they've just stated, "I won't be there."
Right. So this is where you're getting into, like, I'm thinking of, like, employment law, I'm thinking like HR. I don't know what, if attendance is, if Bussar City has an attendance policy for any of their employees, but maybe it would be, in light of recent events, I'm not saying that someone has to provide a doctor's note or anything like that, but maybe it would be beneficial for, like, a general understanding? I mean, and I'm not gonna pick on you, but I know you won't care, but like, you booked a flight before you even realized you were gonna have this position to go on a trip, it's not like it would be fair to you to take a loss, you know?
Right.
So from my understanding, like, that is something that's pre-planned, you know, like a pre-planned, something that, before you were even, you know, but like, I don't know, just saying, that's where you're crossing into what is considered a valid excuse, so...
Well, and see, I don't know, like to say what the city does with their employees, I mean, if someone...
I mean, you're not an employee, but then people are so quick to say, like, "Well, we pay you with our tax money, and we voted you in," so then at the same time, it's like a level of transparency, just so the public's not thinking, I'm not saying, like, you have to say you have an ongoing serious medical condition and divulge your, you know, entire health history.
Like I did on Facebook.
But, you know, just like, I don't know, 'cause the only other thing that, and we talked about this, is that, what's the definition of a regular council meeting? Because, like, Robert's Rule states a stated or regular council meeting, and then Sunshine Law says all regular meetings have to be, a regular council meeting, regular meetings have, are, the definition is they're posted or scheduled at the beginning of the session or at the beginning of the year.
And we do that.
Right, so my question is, that includes committee meetings, so then that's where I think you're getting into a definition of where is that stated? Because if a regular council meeting includes committee meetings, then you talk about how long someone's been absent, 10 meetings racks up a lot quicker than...
Well, and I, you know, I had asked about the opinion that you had given.
I was gonna say, would you like to share my opinion with her?
You may, I did send her a copy of it, that's why I checked with you first.
I didn't, I don't think I received it, sorry.
Pardon, you didn't get it?
Maybe you sent it to me and I missed it, I'm sorry. Was it in the same email today?
Oh, no, no, it was last, it was last week, 'cause I put in there that, you know, I had checked with Mr. Grobik first to make sure that I had permission to remove that.
I might have missed it, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you mind sharing with me, sorry?
It's what, four pages? I think...
Cliff notes?
No cliff notes, my opinion will speak for itself.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll look out and see if I can find that, so. Okay, I think that's all I have on that point.
So we understand what we're gonna do on rules of procedure as far as with us notifying Miranda when we're not gonna be present?
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. That's pretty much...
I know this isn't finalized, so like, you can't hold, this is not passed legislation, it hasn't been voted, but I think, I appreciate the time that everyone took on this, because I think that these are things that probably should have been ironed out for years, not just, like, put on your guys' slaps, you know? But I think with what you have, until it passes as legislation, I encourage the council as a citizen to find a way to address ongoing issues, because there, these issues that are occurring at council have longstanding impact in the community. There's camps that have formed of opinion, because the process hasn't happened here. So I just encourage the discussion today be looked at and the issues be addressed, and how you are allowed to address them, given what tools you currently have, so that's my parting note.
I know the last time that chapter 111 and 113 were amended was September the 1st, 2020. There was one amendment done on June 1st, 21, but that was just adding in, was either adding in or deleting a duty of a committee, but one of guts, where there were actual change, change, changes. I mean, September 120, so it's been almost, well, it's been over four years before, you know, those two chapters.
It seems like it should have been done a long time, more than this, four years ago.
It was started and then it fell through the cracks. And unfortunately, now with technology and, like I say, the social media and all, it's just not a simple... But anyhow, we will get it done.
We'll get it done.
We will. I know one thing that I am going to say... I know one thing that I am going to suggest is, and I know, everyone knows that I've been big on not doing legislation as emergency, unless it absolutely has to be done. I mean, if it doesn't, you know, there's the three readings, it gives the public, you know, the time to come and talk. As it's been pointed out, you know, this group, for nine months, we've been working on this. So I'm thinking that when we finally get a draft that we want to present to council, that we might consider passing this as an emergency, so we can get it on the books and have something that we can, you know, clench our teeth into, because if not, I mean, we're looking at, like, two, three months, it'll be, it'll be next year. You know, just a thought, I mean, it will be up to the, well, I guess it'll be up to us as a committee how we want to request it, but then council can always change whatever we request, yes, Clarissa?
My only thought, right, my thought is, I don't disagree with you, because I feel like this was long overdue anyway, and I think we had this discussion, though, you guys kind of inherited a mess, like.
Well, and I'm thinking with all the meetings we've had, if somebody's really interested, they would have been coming to.
That's what I was saying, yeah. I mean, I don't think you give any preferential treatment to me or Mr. White or anybody that, it's not like I was given a special privilege to come here, like, I initiated interest, you included me because I asked to be included.
That he did, yes.
Well, right, but I mean, in the correspondence emails, as a chair, yeah, you included me, and I do appreciate that, but like, I feel like this is the bread and butter of what everything else can happen with, so I feel like this is very important, and I feel like even now, still, this has to be another revision, so there's going to be another meeting.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And there's been tons of time for people to put in the input, and at some point, you have to say, "We have some serious things that we need to address and you need to plan," so my opinion is that you, that's probably appropriate, but.
Thank you. All right, if we don't, let's see, I think we covered everything, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Public participation.
No, I understand the public participation.
We have to.
No, you suspended the rules, so definitely you don't.
What's that?
You suspended the rules, so definitely you don't.
Oh, so, hey, if no public participation from the audience, then we're fine. I move to adjourn the meeting. Now, see there, it says, "Set up wallet." Why does it say that?
8:53.
8:53, I adjourn, thank you.